I don't care about you. Mr. Bernard, you ready?
Yes, I am, sir.
Okay, we recently completed an executive session, so we'll hop into the open session. Actually, before we start the meeting tonight, I'd like to ask that we observe a moment of silence to honor and remember those who tragically lost their lives 16 years ago. First item on our agenda is public input, and I'm pretty certain that there isn't anybody from the public to be here tonight, although I do want to welcome our brand-new reporter, Maureen Darty, to the stage tonight.
I already missed Dan, though. I really do. I see.
Your work will be graded against Dan's. I don't want to put any pressure on you.
Congratulations, Maureen.
Yes. I want to congratulate you on becoming editor of the transcript. Looking forward to reading the paper every week. Great news. Someone who is embedded in our community and who knows it like the back of her hand. So, welcome back. Next is student report. We will have our first student report at our next meeting, Mr. Bernard.
That's correct, on the 25th.
Okay.
I believe it's Geraldine Kayatum is up.
Okay. And next item is continuing business, the MSBA SSBC update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, a few things I would like to highlight for you, some of which may be a little bit redundant, but I want to keep them kind of on the front burner and also in the public eye, so to speak, is that there is still some remaining areas. There are still some remaining areas to be hydro-seated, particularly as the bridge comes from the Main Street corridor over to the high school, there was a sloped area that just had a very difficult time with grass germinating. And so Gilbane has agreed to re-hydro-seed the area sometime this month. We're hoping to capture the fall growing season, so that still is scheduled to take place. The landscape consultant, those of you that have been intimately involved with the project know of Bill Brown, he was on-site the week of September 4th, and he identified the need for three tree replacements, and there are approximately 23 other plant items that have been identified as needing to be replaced, but they're mostly low-growing shrubs in kind of the pavilion areas, either at the main entrance or by the gymnasium entrance. But when we last met to review the punch list about two or three weeks ago, there was a consideration that maybe those plants might not need to be necessarily replaced because the ones that are doing well have kind of grown together, and they're really, I think, they're taking nice shape, and they're kind of filling the spots where others might need to go. So essentially, what has been asked is for those remaining, I think it's just under 30 items, both the three trees and then the remaining 26 or so low-growth plants, to be monetized for consideration by the SSBC to see whether or not we would be more amenable to accepting the cost and kind of putting that back to the project as opposed to going forward with the tree replacements and the shrub replacements. So that's something that's anticipated for the next SSBC meeting on September 19th. The third bullet in my report to you actually changed over the weekend. It was from the last punch list review meeting, there was a meeting set for this coming Wednesday, September the 13th, but some of the principal parties, namely those from PMA and Gilbane, are not able to attend, so that meeting has been changed at the request of the chairman of the SSBC. It looks like we'll be meeting at 4:00 on the 19th instead. That would be right prior to the full SSBC meeting. So quite honestly, I think we, some of us that were at the last meeting were a little disappointed to hear that we would not be meeting on the 13th. I think it might have put us in a better position, and I know, Mr. Webster, Mr. Venezia, you heard about this today at the finance planning team meeting, but I think we were hoping to have a little bit more advanced time to consider the position on some of those outstanding punch list items, of which there are not many, and there are a number that have been resolved since the last meeting, mostly in the zone of kind of the warranty items and paperwork being received. Some have a deadline of actually September 12th tomorrow, but be that as it may, it looks like September 19th is going to be kind of the more, you know, the date when we're going to have more of an update.
And just to add, of the remaining actual construction punch list items, I believe the one main one is the drainage area outside your central administration, and also some issues with some of the catch basins and manhole covers that have to be looked at by our public works department, correct?
Correct. There are really three that involve any kind of, what I would say, labor. The others tend to be more paperwork, receipt of documents and such, but you're right. There continues to be puddling outside of the central office around that small island with a drain that I think is just too high, and I think, I actually spoke with Joanna Krip from Gilbane last week about what I, I think I tend to see it the most because it's right outside my window, and I can tell where it's puddling and to what extent. I think, I just think the drain is too high. There is an inspection for a manhole down kind of in the Dodge Road area that we're waiting for someone from the Dow Company that did the repaving to kind of give a third-party assessment along with our public works department. You're right, on this one manhole that required some sort of a retrofit, and the engineers not willing to sign off on it because they weren't present to see it.
Right.
But we're, I think we're at a place where we're at least willing to entertain the idea of a third-party assessment. And then the third item, again, these that involve any kind of labor is a very small item. It's a, what I believe is a need for a replacement of a piece of glass in the serving line in the high school cafeteria.
That's right.
That I looked at again today, and I'm convinced that it's just, it's a flawed piece of glass. It's pitted, so.
So the bottom line is there were approximately 30 items on that punch list, and I think about 27 or 26 of them were paperwork items.
Right.
And, you know, we had set a date of August 15th, at which after that, there was an opportunity for us to assess a penalty to Gilbane.
Only on the drainage.
Right.
Right. And they completed that item, and so there's no penalties assessed to Gilbane. For all intents and purposes, the project is done, except for those few minor construction items and all the paperwork.
I think, yeah, I think we're very, very close, yeah.
You're still working with OCHERS as well, right?
Yes, I am. In fact, they're going to be in here on Wednesday. I will have.
Can I explain a little bit what OCHERS?
Sure. So, OCHERS is the consultant that was hired to essentially install, provide and install much of the AV, the audiovisual systems in the building. They've been very good to work with. I will have for the SSBC meeting on the 19th, an updated report on the work that they have done to date. It's substantial. Not a lot of real big items, but they're significant. I think the benefits of them are significant. The improvements have made a difference. They're coming back in on Wednesday to tie the gymnasium area down to the control room downstairs with a fiber optic line, I'm going to say. They've been in pretty consistently, though. They've been a good presence here. They've done some nice work.
They've made some improvements, correct?
They have. They identified some things that they, I'll give you, the best example I can give you of something that I think was a design flaw, is to control the systems from the Performing Arts Center. The only place to do that previously was in the control booth, which we all know is a good distance away from the stage. They've installed a Creston panel on the stage now, behind the wall, so you can.
That's excellent.
Which, on its very simplest level, there's a place now that you can control the screen coming up and down from that location, which makes total sense.
That's excellent.
They did that for a very, they've done a lot of work at no cost. Some things have had a cost. That's one that's had, I think it's a relatively low, it's about $1,037.
Well, the projector thing they did, too, was excellent. Was it where they?
They did a cutout of the projector in the control room in the Performing Arts Center, yeah. That was, it's a very expensive piece of equipment, and it was just the way it was designed. It was in kind of the path walkway. It was very susceptible to being kicked, you know, by no, just by why, because it's an area that tends to be dark, too, because it's, you know, performance is in there. So they built a kind of a rack that slides it in and out for bulb changing and such, to any other maintenance that it might need eventually, but it also is built now, out now into the Performing Arts Center. I think they did a nice finish job with that. You wouldn't even, I think if I didn't tell you, you probably wouldn't have noticed. It's one of those deals. But again, it's to preserve the piece of equipment, which is very costly. I think I'm looking at them, there's a projector that I'm very interested in purchasing with the funds that are available to replace the projector in this room. I think, you know, this is really one of our kind of premier spaces, premier presentation spaces. The projector that's on now is a replacement of the same one that we believed all along was not right, and we finally got someone to say, "You're right, it's not right." So they replaced it, but it's the same model. There's an enhanced model that is so much better. You can project in this room with the lights on, with the window shades up. The quality is much sharper. It's almost like a television screen. So if the funds allow, through what's been allotted, to do that, that's something I'm going to be very interested in doing. They've replaced some equipment at no cost. They've made recommendations on other things that they think that we should consider, but they're not, they're small items that have a significant benefit, I think, to the performance.
How about the audio in the Performing Arts Center?
So, that's a good question. You were talking about the new microphones?
Yeah, the new microphones and how they, you know.
So, if you noticed last week when I was speaking, you had, the microphones we have right now have to kind of be right in front of you. We've purchased a set, a number of microphones that are, they're just a different style, and you don't need to be right on top of the microphone. You can be at a distance, you know, a normal distance away from it. And they'll also be in sync with what NORCAM needs to have for something like, say, town meeting. You know, right now, we have the two microphones. That will be eliminated.
That's good.
Where I'm anticipating, I informed the town administrator this morning that I'm anticipating that we'll have those for town meeting, so that's what things are looking at. But the, I think what's been done, the trainings that have been provided, I think the quality has been much better and much more consistent. There was a, there's been a lot done. I would say their report, when I show the SSBC on next Tuesday night, I would be willing to bet that it's a three-page report with probably 25 or so items.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but this relationship was kind of cultivated by John independent of the Secondary School Building Committee. In other words, you worked with OCHERS directly, right, on this thing?
I did. Patrick Daly, really, and I. We were seeking codes to program the Creston panel, and the only people to get that from were the OCHERS folks. And they reached out, they wrote back to us asking for a meeting, that they really felt like their customer service had been compromised, and they wanted to try to restore that with us, and I think, I'm convinced that it was not through fault of theirs, that their, I guess their reputation was something they were.
They were the subcontractors.
Right.
They did.
They've been, I would go as, so far as to say that they've probably been the best subcontractor to work with in terms of getting them back to help us, and they have gone out of their way. I mean, I forget where they are, but they're far. It's not close by, and they have made every effort. They sent someone here to be here on Tuesday during my opening day with the staff, just because they had done a lot of work leading up to that, and that was like the first real big presentation since they had done work, and they were, they had someone here to just, you know, and everything, there was not a problem. You know, it went well, so you're right, Jerry.
All the costs for those items are covered through SSBC?
Correct. It was money held from the sub, OCHERS is kind of the sub-subcontractor, the subcontractor, we kind of.
Which was Austro.
Austro, right.
We purchased the microphones.
Yes, we purchased the microphones.
Microphone purchase came from.
That was through facility rental, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. But there was an allotment of money that was not paid to Austro to just kind of say, "Look, you're done. We're going to kind of work with this," and that was all agreed upon. And right now, we've spent, out of that allotment, I'm going to be bringing a bill to the meeting on Tuesday night, I think it's $1,037. So there's still a good amount of money there for us to, I'd say, enact the recommendation that OCHERS is making on various pieces of equipment or, you know, wiring of things or improvements that they would make to enhance performance.
So two other things that are related to the building project, maybe not 100% related to the SSBC. One is, I want to report that we're getting full use of the all-purpose field now, and nothing but rave reviews. That thing is like a putting green.
Really is.
Watching the soccer teams down there.
Every day.
So, given the pain that some of us on this, at this table went through to get that done, I'm very happy to see that. The other thing is, I do want to mention, I don't think we've mentioned it before, but we are looking at the issues in the back parking lot. There are some cracks, and I know, John, you said you were going to be bringing that to the SSBC next Tuesday.
I am, on Tuesday. Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that. Thank you. That's something I forgot to talk about, but yeah, we, I'm a little, you know, I think we need to do some kind of proactive work in addressing some cracks in the pavement that really should be done before the winter. So I've been working with the public works director of the town to get an estimate, and I have that, and I'm going to be talking, brought it up a little bit this morning at finance planning team, but I'll be bringing it up at the SSBC on Tuesday.
And we have been discussing that with Gilbane, and bottom line is, everybody's telling us that it's a year warranty, however, there is some pretty serious cracks back there with a lot of grass growing through, and for how many years was the high school down there? 55 years or 60 years or whatever? I don't remember the parking lot ever looking like that, so it's an issue. We're dealing with it, and we're going to get it, we're going to at least have some kind of fix before the winter, because if we don't, there's a real potential that water gets underneath, it freezes, it cracks, then we have a huge problem.
But again, it's a tribute to the SSBC and to the school department, because it's three and a half years later, four school seasons later at the high school, and we're still like rabid dogs on Gilbane and PMA trying to get everything done.
Right.
We haven't let go.
No.
We haven't let them get away.
Right.
So, it's, you know, we'll continue to pursue remedies, that's for sure.
Anything else on the school building project?
I don't think so.
Okay. So the next SSBC meeting is next Tuesday?
Is next Tuesday, correct.
5:30.
Right.
Maureen, do you have a question?
Can I just ask the spelling of the subcontract?
Yes, OCHERS, it's O-C-K-E-R-S. Right.
Okay, next, move to new business, and Mr. Bernard, you have a report on opening day. I will say that based on Facebook, the first three days seem to have gone really well.
Well, that's good.
Something did come up today, I'll talk to you.
I'm glad to hear it. I'm glad to hear it. We, honestly, I really, I could not be more pleased with the opening to the new school year. I think all reports from the schools that I've received have been very positive. I made the conscious decision on the first day of school to not be at the three elementary schools. I just have a former principal, I know that there's just a lot to do, and I didn't want to be in the way, so I left them all alone, but I let them know that I would be there on Thursday. And actually, Michael and I went around to all three elementary schools and, we spent quite, more time than, I think, we probably spent two hours in total, maybe, with the three schools.
Yes.
And had a really good, a really good walkthrough, and saw a lot of students and teachers, and I just think there was a really, a lot of nice energy in the schools. But a lot of, a lot of good, you know, work goes on in the summertime to prep for the opening day, and, you know, it was, it was very good. I just, I really think it was seamless, and it's, you know, it's business as normal by now, and I think our opening day with staff, opening day meeting with staff, and I appreciate the committee, all the committee members being there on Tuesday to speak, you know, and Mr. Webster, I agree with, you know, I appreciate your comments, and I know the staff does, too, and I think your presence there means a lot, you know, that you take the time to come and to be a part of that day is, it's important to me, and it has meaning, I think, for the district, so, you know, I'm really, I'm very thankful to not only the folks that work for the district, but also, you know, the students, they just, they come to school clearly understanding my experiences that they clearly understand, you know, no matter their age, pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, what their primary purpose is and why they're in school, and their parents are just extremely positive and supportive, and so I, you know, we had not a single bus issue reported to us. Just a very, very good opening to the day, and I'm very happy to report that to all of you and to the public.
John, if I could, I usually don't do this, but I really appreciated Peter Kane's words. I thought he gave an excellent speech in terms of what he focused on and, you know, what the impact teachers have, and I thought, I just thought the whole day was excellent. Unfortunately, I couldn't stay for the insurance presentation, but I wish, I wish I could have.
You wouldn't want to stay.
That looked like it was going to be excellent, but it was great to be there, and Julie and I had a good time the week before.
Yes.
At the new teacher luncheon. That was a lot of fun.
Good.
Sitting with people and you're saying, "Oh, my God, I'm so old. This is pitiful." I was sitting with two teachers who are both, they're long-term subs, they're here for a year, I think both at the middle school, and I started talking to them, and they went to Austin Prep. And of course, they're like a year older, they're like a year older than my son and other people, and so they know, and I'm like, "I can't really sit here and talk to you about my son," and.
Hard to believe that.
It really is crazy.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, but that was, it was a nice group, nice group of teachers.
I've been working in education longer than some.
Oh, I know.
People we're hiring have been alive.
Exactly.
Yeah?
But it was a good.
By a number of years.
Good group, and one thing that was impressive, I mean, turnover in general, you're always going to have turnover, but very few new teachers at the high school. It's almost like two or three, I think.
We have two.
Who's that teacher?
Two and one long-term sub.
Right.
Right.
That was good.
Thank you.
So glad you have first day. Good first day. Now, do you have enrollment? Is Michael going to talk about that, or?
Either one of us can.
I actually had some questions, I had some questions on enrollment.
Sure.
Because I saw that the number right now is 24, 29, 2494.
2494.
And Michael, I was looking at the projections, and we had projected 2453 for this year.
Okay.
So we have 41 more students than projected. I'm not casting, I'm just saying we ought to start thinking about.
Going back to the finance committee, getting more money.
No, no, that's not what I was going to say, Mr. Venezia. You always put words in my mouth that cause problems for me, sir. Is that correct? Because next year, we have a projection of 2404. I took these off the website today.
Eight to nine as well.
Yeah, I mean, I'll certainly, I'm.
I'm just, because I'm just wondering if we're going to have to redo, because I don't think we're going to drop 100 students to next year, you know?
Right. I think what will happen is when we redo, when we get the official October 1, we'll relook at all the survival, you know, the percentages of, and redo the projections, and this will obviously, you know, correct, and I think we'll look at where the variances were and look at what our assumptions, and what we do is we look at the three, five, and 10-year survival rates.
Right.
The percentage, and then look at what's going on with the housing market and developments in town, and we try to come up with a percentage of, you know, survival ratio, I guess, for lack of a better word, at each grade. I think, I know kindergarten is definitely higher than what we projected. We thought it was going to be a lower kindergarten potentially due to the birth rates that were five or six years prior.
So am I seeing that correctly, about 179 in kindergarten?
Yeah, so I know right.
That's a lot. I think we were projecting 150 something for that.
That came about in the budget process. We knew that it was higher than what we.
And that's, we had that.
Yeah, that's why I had that.
In October.
We also had a very.
That makes up about 20 students of that.
Very small number, from grade eight to grade nine, too.
Because it'll be interesting to see once, on October, sometime in October, we'll have the breakdown of class sizes and all that, right?
Correct.
When you get the official enrollment number.
Yeah.
So kindergarten, and don't we usually see an increase from kindergarten to first grade also? Aren't there still parents who send their kids to private?
We do, yeah. It's been generally about a 6% increase.
So if you increase that by 6%, we're probably talking about 185, 190 for first grade next year.
Yep.
And we have 166 this year. I guess this is the, I just think we are going to have more students than we're expecting we're going to have, because I continue to argue, not with you, but with other people, that we're seeing more families come in, and there are more houses being sold, like my wife and I, or older people, people older than us, who sell their homes, and we're getting an influx of two- and three-children families, I believe. And it was just interesting to see that we were pretty, like, almost 2% higher than the projection for this year, with 41 more students than projected. So, obviously, we'll have to keep an eye on that. And John, how many, do we know how many we lost between that?
I think it's seven.
Wow.
Seven students, not 100%.
So, yeah, so from 202 to 195, that's like 3.4%.
Yeah, that's.
That's really low.
Yeah, that, we've been hovering around that, like, five, so it's much lower this year, which is a good thing, but.
We lose hardly any between fifth and sixth, correct?
Very, very few.
Right.
Yeah, I can tell you right now, just very quickly looking at it, the major variances to the projections was in the kindergarten, even grade one level, and then in the middle school in particular. We had 530 as a projection at the middle school. So the decline that we thought we were going to see of up to, you know, over 30 students didn't really occur, the 30. We thought we were going to see maybe 40, 40-student decline. It didn't, it didn't occur.
And what do we have for kindergarten projection?
So kindergarten was.
If it's easy to find. It's not?
Trying to find the detail on that. I might have to pull up my other spreadsheet.
Okay, if you can't.
Is it there or no, in that document, no?
I want to say we were like in the 160 range.
Okay.
By my memory, and so we, I think we're about 18, 19 higher, and that came out during the, after the February registration process.
Right.
So, I think between those two, that's almost the 40-student difference.
Between that, and you've got nine new homes going in over in Little District.
Yeah.
And you've got new homes going in, there was a, there was a piece of property sold that was like 12 acres, and I heard there's another six or seven homes going in there. So even though we don't have the big developments and the teardowns, which in a lot of cases is just sad, you're seeing, you're still seeing a lot of teardowns.
Yeah.
And big houses being built, so.
Families, yeah.
So, Michael, when will you revise the?
So, when we, once we have the official October 1, we will wait for the October 1 count. I'll plug that into my database, do some research, get some birth rates, you know, talk to, you know, the town clerk's office and get some data, and then revise the numbers. And then I think November 13th is the official presentation out to reach the school committee, the ruler projection presentation.
Okay.
So.
Any other questions or comments on opening day? I have to agree with John that it seems, as I said, it seems to have gone extremely well.
Yeah, I'm very pleased.
I mean, this is the first year I can remember in a long time where there wasn't either a phone call, an email, or something on social media about buses not picking up kids, buses showing up 45 minutes late, 45 minutes early, wrong bus stop. I didn't see any of that.
And I think that's attributed to the hard work that happens.
I agree.
You know, over the summer to make sure that things run as smoothly as possible.
And we also didn't increase fees, so we didn't have any complaints, any complaints about fee, I mean, no one likes to pay fees, but we didn't increase them.
There's always complaints.
Yeah. But we kept them at, you know.
So just really quickly going back, so kindergarten was actually forecasted at 150.
Wow, wow.
And I think it was that data we kind of questioned, it was that, we had the birth rate data of the, you know, five or six years prior, which was what drives that number, and it seemed to be a decline, but I think what that underestimated was all the move-ins.
Move-ins.
150, geez.
So that's a big, everything else is actually pretty accurate, with exception of a couple So that's, that's a big, everything else is actually pretty accurate, with exception of a couple of grades at the middle school, but I think that's the big delta right there, was the kindergarten.
And so then when you move that, when you move that forward, you could be going from a first grade of 166 to a first grade of 185 to 190, when you add, add kids in, so, although it's spread over three schools, so, should be, as long as they're not all in one district, should be doable. Anything else?
I think that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, on opening day.
Okay, thanks, John and Michael. Okay, next, we have a presentation by Michael on proposal for large capital projects for next year, and also a, basically a five-year look at where we are. Michael?
So, uh, there is a presentation, just a little bit of a PowerPoint. In your packet, I'll just remind you that obviously there was a copy of the PowerPoint slides, as well as the five-year capital plan template that we've been using to guide this process over the last few years here. So I thought tonight we would touch upon, we view the capital items approved for fiscal 18. Uh, there was, we had a busy summer, and a lot of the projects and things that we got approved in fiscal 18, ordered and received, and distributed, et cetera, so we'll, I thought we'd start by touching upon those items. Then discuss the five-year large capital plan, but with a focus on fiscal 19 items, but we'll also look to some of the items in the future, both three and five years out. Will we view the CIPC timeline and process? As you know, what gets approved here by the committee gets submitted to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee later this month or in October for further consideration. And then obviously, we'll leave time for discussion and questions. I think the idea is sort of to present what the administration's recommendation. We've been at it for a couple of months. We worked, um, throughout the summer month, trying to make some changes to the plan, which we'll highlight for you this evening, and then open up for discussion and questions, but I think we're looking for an actual vote at the next meeting on September 25th. So, the computer replacements of 60,000 for fiscal year 18, I'm happy to report that we ordered, um, about 220 Chromebooks with the appropriation of $60,000. They were received in, um, the end of July, and certainly configured by the summer tech team, um, here. And then, just this past end of the month, I mean, August 30th and August 31st, there was meetings held with parents, and both Dr. Daley and Dr. Downs, and their team, a digital learning team, and they, um, distributed to the seventh graders to begin the one-to-one initiative in the district, so a very exciting time, and everything went very, very well. The elementary Wi-Fi upgrade, I'm happy to report that project also was completed in, in July, and everything went very, very well, so that certainly the, as a refresher, the, the majority of these funds were supported by a state grant, digital learning grant, that the district received. The upfront cost was the 107, 357, shown here on the slide, but we are waiting for about a $63,000 E-rate reimbursement, and everything is filed, and I would say around the January, February timeframe, the town would receive a reimbursement check to help offset this cost.
So, Mike, can you, I try to take huge credit for you and Dr. Downs and, and Patrick every time I can on this issue. Can you tell us what the total cost was, and the fact that, and make it clear that the town, I'll make it clear, the town's gonna be paying $44,000, basically, once we get the E-rate. What was the total cost of the project?
This was about a $275,000 total, total cost, and it's, it started actually much higher, and through some competitive, um, RFPs that we've put out multiple times, we made it a very competitive process, and the final award was closer to about $275,000. So the grant that we received was about 60% of that cost. And then the upfront cost by the town was the 107, 357, the, you know, 40% of that cost, but then, um, E-rate helps bring in another $62,000. So you're right, the, the final net impact was about 43, 44,000 dollars.
And I think, I know the committee is, I know the selectmen and the finance committee and the town administrator, but the, the whole town should be appreciative that we were able to do a pretty large project for $43,000 of, of town taxpayer money. I think that's pretty impressive, and it's tribute to you guys for getting this work done.
And certainly, the benefit is huge. Uh, the elementary schools are gonna experience that, and they're already certainly using it, and to great, to great, a great advantage. It's, and it was a lot, it was a busy work that started, and, but everything went very, very well.
Because basically, it didn't work bef, I mean, it worked, but it was very sketchy as how, how well it worked.
Yeah, now there's a robust Wi-Fi similar to this building throughout each elementary school. Before, it was kind of in pockets, you know, at certain schools, and you had to bring out the card and, and sign on and so forth, but now that's not the case.
Excellent.
It's great. The third project was the Bachelor School PBD Street Entrance Repair. It was a $25,000 appropriation to address the front entrance repair, the concrete pad, and the columns, and the woodwork, and so forth. So this was a picture back over a year ago that we presented as part of this request. You can see there was some, certainly work needed in these columns, and in the front, you know, concrete area, um, and this kind of shows you the progress. We had the concrete pad was sort of poured and replaced, redone at the beginning of August. We then had some, the work, the carpenters then worked on the columns. We repaired many of these wood pieces up here, and the, all the four columns were replaced with more of a, um, you know, a non-wood product for long-lasting, and then we received a nice, a nice fresh, you know, paint job as well, and the final product here is in this picture, so it definitely came out very, very nice.
And one thing to explain on that, I, I don't think much work, if any, was done to this area when the school was rebuilt. I mean, I know there was some work done, but this wasn't a focus area when the school was, this is part of the original building, correct? Which is pretty old, so it looks great, and what was it, 25,000?
$25,000.
So. Well worth it.
All right, so all three projects that were approved and appropriated in fiscal 18 are, were completed. So now that brings us to the looking ahead, fiscal 19 through fiscal 23. As a reminder, we, we tend to focus our large capital requests in these three areas. Vehicles, our vehicle, our fleet of vehicles, technology, facilities, um, as a reminder, the criteria for including an item as a large capital request to the CIPC must have a useful life of at least five years, and have a total cost of $25,000 or more. So here's a quick snapshot of the three-year chart. I know your, your template and your plan, we go out five years. The CIPC right now is looking at three years. So this is, um, where we're at from fiscal 19 through fiscal 21 in the three major capital category areas. We did our, our best to sort of attempt to balance off the requests, um, over the, the next three to five years. We tried to not have any one year that was a great, huge outlier, that would be a challenge for the town to suddenly come up with the additional appropriation. I'm gonna go back to this chart at the end and show you where we, where this chart compares to the, what's been approved over the last, you know, three to five years as well. But I think it's fair to say we have about over $950,000 of large capital requests and needs, um, really over the next three years. So we're gonna start looking at vehicle requests, um, and for fiscal 19 next year, we have a, we're actually bringing back, um, the multi-function activity vehicle request. This was a request that we had on the plan in the past. It had become very close to being funded by the CIPC, but hadn't quite made the, the cutoff line for approval by the CIPC. We then deferred it last year and pushed it out a little bit, but I think it's fair to say, over the last year, we've really seen even the need for this type of vehicle even increase, even, in particularly, not only by the athletic teams and the athletic transportation, which I think would be the, the, the core use of the vehicle, we're seeing a lot of extracurricular, um, you know, clubs and, and various uses of the vehicle that would, could happen even during the school day, field trips, extracurricular events as well. But we feel that if this, if we had access to this vehicle, again, it's a 15-passenger vehicle, that the athletic department could use this anywhere between 45 and 60 athletic runs throughout the year. Now, we contract out for athletic transportation, and we're currently paying anywhere between 280 and 300 dollars per run. So if we're able to optimize the use of this type of a vehicle, we feel we could save anywhere between 13,000 and 16,000 dollars on an annual basis.
So, other, other than tennis, what could we use it for?
So I think, I think a lot of the teams that.
Oh, golf, yeah.
Tennis, um, a lot of the teams that when they get into either tournament level, and they're.
Oh, right, when, right.
Basketball's only to all over states level, we think it could, it could definitely be used.
Right.
So, I've certainly worked with the athletic director, Dave Johnson. He's, he's identified and gone through the schedule, and we feel there's about 45 in that range.
Well, actually, if you, so if you look at, there's 18 to 20 tennis matches, right? So one team is home, one team's away, so, and then there's 15 or so golf matches.
Yep.
Same.
So you're at 33, 35 already. Okay, I can, I can see that, yeah.
Yeah, we can get to that.
Yeah. Jerry?
Mike, do we have any contractual obligation with, under our bus contract to?
We do not.
So we can take these out, then? I mean, we don't have to go through the bus company?
That's correct, yeah. We're not obligated, and we could, we have our right to purchase our own vehicles and, and, um, try to bring as much in-house as we, as we can. The good thing about this is you only need a, as the, a valid driver's license to operate the vehicle, so we would certainly, if this were approved and adopted, we would come up with the parameters to the, to the in-house staff that would potentially be using the vehicle of, of, of what, what that, you know, what the appropriate use of the vehicle is.
Mike, Julie has a question. Julie?
Yes.
So would other levels be able to use the vehicle, like, not just the high school, the middle school?
Correct, yep.
Perhaps some elementary, if they're going to rob robotics?
That's right.
Tournament?
Yep, we would see some, some clubs, some, yep, some robotics, and our new robotics, you know, competitions could be coming up this year, and, um, absolutely. You know, there are times that during the school day where even there's even a group of staff that are going to a professional development opportunity, and, and, you know, they don't want to take their own vehicles and carpool, and, you know, this is something that could be available for, for items like that.
I've come around on this almost 100%, almost 180, about 160.
Okay.
One issue, what's the liability issue in terms of, so a teacher could drive it, that, we wouldn't let a student drive it, I would assume?
No.
They could, but we wouldn't let them. So what kind of insurance, do we have to get a different kind of insurance, or?
No, so we, this would be, this vehicle would be added to our fleet of vehicles covered under our existing insurance company with the, the town's insurance carrier. And as long as it's a staff, um, covered under our general liability and, you know, insurance package, umbrella package, um, going to a school-sponsored event, if there's, you know, an accident or a guffaw, an issue, everything would be covered.
Good.
So one thing to, to highlight as well, though, is the, the actual current estimated cost of this vehicle is about $50,000. It's gone up a little bit from the request. We had about 45 a few years ago, so the market's changed a little bit. But we propose, because we really want to try to push this, push this through, that the request to the CIPC would be about $35,000, and we would actually use the estimated savings in year one to offset that cost. We think that it would have a better, um, you know, potential to be adopted and approved, and then everything after year one, where we're seeing the savings directly.
I think that's a real good way to sell it. It's a reasonable request. The only request I would have is that we have a hornet painted on the side.
It would be personalized.
It would be personalized to North Redding, correct?
As you can see, this is some other vehicle, these are some other vans. Tough to see right in the picture, but I think that's Westboro, I think Lincoln.
There was one out there, very similar today for tennis, but I think it was, you know, another transportation company. I don't think it was.
Yeah.
Okay.
For the school.
Okay. Great, so then if you look at the future vehicle requests, um, some things, you know, a couple of years out, we, as you know, we have a fleet of four special education van, uh, needs, and, um, we've replaced three of those four vans over the last four years. The final van in need for replacement is a 2007 van, which currently has over 121,000 miles on it. It's currently used as a spare, although I do say it does receive, you know, pretty daily or weekly use, um, in, in our current operation. But the plan would be to replace this vehicle. It's, we've kept it, we've kept it in good shape, but as you know, it's, when you get over 120,000, you know, miles on any vehicle, it's certainly getting to the point where it's reaching the end of its useful life, so we definitely see a need to continue this request. If this would be funded, and the capital plan is presented and supported in fiscal 20, the idea is that this van would then move down and replace what is currently being used by the food service department, which is a minimal-use van, but that, that food service vehicle's a 2005 vehicle, so then this would come down and we'd, uh, replace that vehicle. The building grounds department, we have, uh, we've replaced a van, um, you know, a pickup truck several years ago, and this, this truck is sort of the next priority in the building grounds department. It's currently being used, 2009 vehicle currently used by one of our maintenance and grounds staff. It's a high-usage vehicle. It's used for snow removal and sanding in the winter months, and certainly when we get to the year, you know, fiscal 21, this vehicle would be getting up to the point where it would be in need for a replacement, you know, given the high usage. And that's this vehicle here. Technology requests, the next area. So as you know, for the last four consecutive years, we've received an allotment of $60,000 to bring in either a combination of new computer devices, which is really what it has been the last two years, and in some cases, replace some of our existing computers in, in the district. So we're certainly seeing that the need for, you know, both ongoing computer replacements, as well as addition, additional devices ever, you know, ever increasing as the school district definitely strives to meet its demands for a computer-based state standardized testing, as well as advance the one-to-one initiative that was, uh, that would begin this school year. So this $60,000 allotment would allow us to continue that one-to-one initiative. It's a very certainly important, uh, request and part of, what's becoming part of our, the curriculum and our digital learning goals, and we feel it would help us provide all students with a comprehensive 21st-century learning experience.
Michael, as of now, I, I know things will change as new technology comes down the road, but pretty much we're putting all this money toward Chromebooks, correct? We don't really need servers anymore or anything, because everything is just going right to the internet. We don't need desktops.
Yeah, we're moving towards more virtual.
Right, everything's in the clouds, so, using Google Docs, et cetera.
Correct.
Okay.
So what is a new request in the technology area is an item that you would not have seen in the past, and certainly is connecting with Dr. Daley and Dr. Downs on the needs, and kind of what's on the horizon, is we are seeing a need for an additional line item, which we currently do not have in our general fund for instructional equipment, and this is a request for $45,000. And we're seeing a need to replace technology items in the classrooms, particularly at the three elementary schools. And this is, would essentially be the smart boards, you know, the overhanging projectors, and in some cases, iPads at the elementary level. So many of these devices were brought in over 10, 10 years ago, and, um, some of them are either not functioning or functioning poorly, and they're certainly reaching the end of their useful life. So we feel, you know, developing a plan where we have some funds, um, either every other year, in the range of 40 to 45,000 dollars, set aside for instructional equipment to help supplement the computer request, it would allow us to identify certain classrooms that are in most need at the elementary level, all three elementary schools, um, and, and help us to start to replace some of these smart boards and projectors, which are definitely reaching the end of their useful life.
Mike, I, I have one question. So the smart boards, the things that are there now, was that equipment originally purchased by the school department? Was it purchased by something else, or were these donations from the PTOs?
It's, it's a combination. It's a combination. Yeah, there definitely, there was some that were supported by the PTO donations, um, you know, some that were perhaps supported, if you even look back at the Bachelor, you know, project, I think some might have been brought in back in 2006, so then, you know, now those are 10 or 11 years old, believe it or not, you know, certainly time goes by, and the little in the hoods, a lot of those are PTO donations, but yes, Mr.?
I was gonna add too, we also repurposed a lot of materials out of the old middle school and high school. Those were paid for through, obviously through the school department.
Michael, I just have one question. I believe the Hood PA, I'm not sure if it was two years ago or three years ago, perhaps, did some sort of baseline what was functioning at the Hood School as far as this type of equipment? Is it safe to say that we need to add more or adjust? Because I think they made some sort of donation to get everything up and running.
Yep.
Whether it was projectors, or bulbs, or things like that. So, you know, how, how does it stand at this point? Is it just further, you know, equipment is getting old and just needs to be replaced, or?
Yes, that's main, mainly what it is. I think, you know, the different schools are in a little bit different areas. Some schools may be in more of a need in this area, you know, smart board, smart board area than, than others, but we feel a request maybe in this range every other year would allow us to identify the classrooms in the most need, with, you know, this would essentially get us six to eight classrooms a, a school, it might be a little bit more in a school a given year, and allow us not to ensure that there's not a given year where we're just, these are breaking down, that can't be used.
And are you looking for smart boards, or you don't know?
I think it would be, it would definitely be, whether it's a smart board or a MIMI O board, something to that effect. You know, this building was the MIMI O boards. It would be something, you know, we would certainly submit proposals, get the most cost, cost-effective solution.
I guess the other thing is, with the, um, functioning Wi-Fi system now.
Right.
The smart boards become more effective now that we have Wi-Fi that's successful in every part of every.
That's right.
Elementary building. Whereas before, you could use them, but you didn't get as much use out of them as you might, because, you know.
Correct.
And that work couldn't handle it.
Right.
Right. Any other questions on technology? Okay, so the third area is the facility, area of facilities, and I think as we know, what's, item that's been in the plan in the past is the little school gym floor. So we did receive and confirm that the $40,000 allotment for next year would allow the little school gym floor to be replaced. This floor was installed in 1997, and certainly showing signs of deterioration. It's definitely reaching the end of its useful life. The current floor is a plastic sectional floor, and it's really not the same quality with the flooring at the other elementary schools. So the proposed floor, which is this picture here, is more of a synthetic rubber athletic floor. It would be very similar to the floor at the Bachelor and the Hood elementary schools. And the proposal does include the removal of the, and the disposal of the existing floor and installation of game lines.
I could let Jerry make the comment, but I, I, I don't understand how from the beginning that floor ever got installed.
It was almost installed, I think, with a mindset of a, uh.
Almost on a gym, right.
A game-type.
Right, exactly.
Supposed to a gymnasium.
Supposed to a gymnasium, yeah.
So, you know, I mean, the rubber floors hold up really well, um, and they're much more, um, useful for basketball and things like that, which is a big demand right now as far as basketball and court time, so.
Yeah, we think for the $40,000 appropriation, we think there would be a significant enhancement to what, you know, the overall experience is in that, in that gymnasium, like, place in the floor.
Is there, is there a, well, two questions. Is there a proposed life for a gym floor usually? Because it seems like 20 years is kind of pushing it, and then.
It wasn't built for a gym.
Honestly, it wasn't built for a gym.
I think, I think it's, I think it's the material.
Should have replaced it 19 years ago.
It was impractical.
Right.
It was installed.
Yeah.
And, and again, I mean, just, just in anything, I mean, I think we need to prioritize things like cost savings, like the vehicle, I think is something to prioritize, and I think the fir, number one priority needs to be safety.
Yeah.
And, and this is clearly a safety.
That's what I would.
Potential issue.
At some point, yeah.
You know, young kids are running around that, you know, are falling on concrete or whatever.
No, it's not.
Yeah, it's becoming difficult to, you know, clean regularly. It just, it's, you know, it's, um, it's compromised, you know, it's, it's challenging.
Michael, do you know the process? Is this like a poured rubber floor, or?
Yeah.
It's liquid. They pour a liquid in there.
And then they level it?
Same as a batch, it's a liquid.
Right, that's the goal.
Correct.
And it, they level it, and it just hardens, right?
Yep. So. This is on the company's website, that you got the proposal from. There's some photos of what you would get, so. So the other request that also is a fiscal 19 request, which would be for next year, is a, maybe similarly to the Hood project that we did in fiscal 16, 17, would be a little school paving project. We're certainly seeing a need, um, and the most immediate need would be, um, this area here, which as you may recall, we removed the old little school playground, uh, last, you know, late, late fall, early winter, and some temporary gravel was, was placed down in that area, and we're certainly seeing a need to expand that parking lot area, so this allotment would both achieve that. You would be able to expand and pave over the existing gravel, um, increase the number of parking spaces at, at the school, and then you would also be able to repair and, um, repave the majority of that kind of staff main parking lot here, where we're seeing some raised areas, some deterioration, some cracking, and so forth. So we think, you know, this allotment would, you know, accomplish a lot, and also expand, expand the parking lot, which, um, and speaking with Ms. Mallory, we know we're seeing a real need for that.
Do you have any idea how many spaces we can get in there?
Um, we, we actually received a proposal from this section, and I want to say. Um, we, we actually received a proposal from this section, and I want to say the DPW's proposal with their contractor was about, this section would cost about twelve or thirteen thousand dollars.
Yep.
I don't know, I, I can't remember how many spaces.
It's badly needed over there.
Yeah.
Any, any time, there's any event, you know, be it the, when the school committee's there, and, yeah, you just can't find any place to park.
Plus, that area's an high school right now.
It is an, what we're experiencing this year, as recent as today, is the plague, the new playground, which is great, but there's, people are staying.
Staying, right.
Parents are staying. At the end of the school day, the children are playing on the playground, which is great, but the spaces aren't freeing up like they used to for, say, a dismissal time.
Yeah, well, I, I would, I would just emphasize, I mean, I think it's, it's dangerous, but, you know, there's no parking, but it's not even just for events, it's normal drop-off and.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Not events. I mean, and, and all the other locations, there's like long entryways in, and, and it's just, it's, and the, the PTO spent so much money doing the beautiful playground there that it's just a shame that the parking lot looks like this when, you know, the people of this, of this town have stepped up so much to fund that. And, you know, and even just some, some better markings, you know, access to the playground is another thing, where, you know, kids are running across, and I know Mrs. Molly's always concerned about, you know, somebody getting hit, because it's not really well, you know, like shown, like where to go and turnarounds and things like that. I think the parking lot's atrocious compared to all the other parking lots.
I agree. Okay, any other questions on this? So, some of the future items, and some of these we've moved around a little bit from last year's plan, as we kind of reprioritized some items, but actually, a new request is a appropriation, which we have in year two of the plan, for the little and hood school lighting upgrades. So, we feel a request of about fifty thousand dollar appropriation would help us begin the process of upgrading the lighting in the main, mainly the common areas, gymnasium, cafeteria, main hallways, you know, library, et cetera, that we think would certainly go a long way in not only providing it, it would be LED lighting fixtures that we think would certainly create and reduce energy lighting consumption by potentially up to fifty to seventy percent, which is what, you know, data shows, what you can, certainly the energy efficiency of an LED system. But we think it would just provide the, the, you know, the schools as well with a big upgrade and enhancement over the, the lighting and the overall look of the, of the school, the interior of the school.
Michael, is there any kind of chance to work with RMLDs, or are there any kind of programs there where we could?
So, you know, we would certainly reach out to RMLD, they do have LED lighting upgrades, and they offer rebates for energy efficiency measures, so that, that would be something that would absolutely be researched, because that, that does exist. The second item is hood school modular demolition, so this was an item that was on.
Michael, he has a question.
Oh, yes.
Michael, um, did you say it was a multi-year upgrade, or is this trying to get it all done at once?
This would accomplish, we feel this amount, you know, we would try to maximize as much working with RMLD, this appropriation. We, it wouldn't do everything, but it would certainly provide that enhancement to those common areas I talked about, based on what we, what we've researched, the costs of the fixtures, et cetera, for LED lighting. And then I think what we would do is kind of reassess what got done, and there might be a need to, you know, revise and maybe, you know, finish it off after.
Okay.
But we, we would see what we could get done. But the estimate is we would take care of the major common areas. So, the hood school modular demolition project, we had this on the proposal last year. We recently received, got an assessment, you know, we had a company come in and provide an assessment of both the hood and the little modular units. So, this was a proposal that, you know, we still feel is something we have to conclude in the plan. This would be year two of the plan. But we actually feel like, you know, the, the proposal just came in on Thursday and Friday, so we just actually were reading it over, reading it on Friday, and even, even today. But we feel like some small ma, the integrity of both of the modular units is actually pretty good. You know, the, the flooring system, you know, the roof, the integrity of the systems are pretty good, so with some small care and maintenance and upkeep, we could actually extend the life of these units at both, at both schools, you know, certainly a few more years. So, this might be something we assess and revisit, maybe there's not a need to have this in year two, but it's certainly gonna have to be addressed, we see in the neck, within the next three to five years.
So, you're saying demolition, but we're gonna put new ones there, we need new ones, right?
Well.
We don't.
We would not, so the idea.
Not being used right now?
They are, but we have, we rent space to seem collaborative.
Oh, so we.
Three classrooms.
So, we have classrooms, we.
Right.
We could use them for us and stuff.
We would.
Now, we lose revenue with that, right?
We lose some rental revenue.
Yes.
Is that significant? Seventeen thousand?
It's about, close to eighteen thousand now, with the increase this year.
Yeah.
True.
Yeah, the modules are, yeah, exactly.
But if they're functioning, you know, and we are able to, you know, rent out the space, then it doesn't make any sense.
I would say to use them as long as we could, as long as we're not.
Well, that's, I think the, the idea last year was to just kind of plant the seed, that they're, they're aging.
Right.
You know, and there is a cost. We spent some money on them last year.
We did.
The handicapped accessibility ramp out the back needing quite a bit of, of maintenance. So, they're not, they're not, they're not not taking money from, you know, the budget too, to keep them up and running, but I think you're right, you know, they're, it's not, it's not an immediate need, and we had the structural integrity of it investigated, and, you know, that's okay, so.
What do we have in the system now? Just the little and the hood?
So, we have four at the hood, was there, is there fourth, I think there's four with the little as well.
Correct.
So, we have eight modules still in. The ones at the little are needed, right?
They're needed, so if we, those come offline, we'd have to have a pretty large capital request to replace those. So, we, we feel, and we, we were waiting for that assessment to come in all summer, you know, it came in like Friday morning, you know, after the publication of the document and so forth. So, we think we could kind of revisit this and with some of the, the maintenance work, which would not be significant based on the assessment, we could kind of increase and expand the, the life of, of both the, at both these schools.
And the ones at the little, are they needed? Because we have the, all of the pre-k over there.
Kindergarten, correct.
Okay, that's correct.
So, um, the third item on here is a little school asbestos mitigation, so we, again, we did some work at both the little and the hood a couple of years ago, and we're seeing a need to certainly continue this. This would be a fiscal twenty and fiscal twenty-three project. So, about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, we received a proposal last year, actually, from the company that we felt could take care of all the remaining asbestos, you know, you know, flooring and so forth at the school. But we find it best to kind of do this in, in phases, so we would like to kind of restart up this project in year two of this plan, and, you know, certainly continue with asbestos mitigation, which would essentially include the replacement of tiling in the, mainly in the hallways, there's a few classrooms, but it's mainly the hallways.
Michael, I think it's always important to point out, we're talking about asbestos mitigation, that there's no.
Is correct.
Danger right now, we just want to replace the asbestos tiles with.
Yeah.
A new type of flooring, but there's no, there's no issues.
Nothing's worth seeing, nothing's.
It's just something that has to be replaced.
Is, is the one hundred and twenty thousand divided over the two years, or a hundred and twenty thousand?
That's divided, so I believe the plan calls for about sixty thousand dollars in fiscal twenty, and a similar amount in fiscal twenty-three. So, it ta, it's hard to do everything all at once, given the timing, and you have to go through a state process to remove and, and mitigate it, so it's easier to kind of do this over a period of a few years.
So, is the hood complete?
The hood is just about complete. The, we, the prior appropriation focused mainly at, on the hood, and we, we essentially completed the hood school. The fourth item on this list would be the hood school boilers, so the largest ticket item is the boilers. We've kind of extended this out into year three of this plan, but the three hundred thousand dollars to replace these boilers, the idea would be to, to bring in high efficiency condensing boilers. We did this at the little school in fiscal year two thousand and twelve, and if we al, if we analyze the, the usage over the last five years, we've certainly, with the new technology of the high efficiency condensing boilers, is definitely, you know, we can definitely save, and I think some estimates, you could save up to ten, twelve thousand dollars annually, perhaps, by the efficiency of these, of, of new boilers, so. In fiscal year twenty-one, these boilers would be over twenty years old. I was asked this morning at the finance planning team meeting, is it a candidate for accelerated repair project with the MSBA, and it, it would be, so it's something we could certainly keep our eye on, but it is certainly a need to continue to keep this on the horizon in the plan.
So, there'd be a potential to get forty some odd percent reimbursement and half, yeah?
Yeah. Again, with the MSBA, we know some overhead costs also are added to, to the cost, just because of the process.
And, you know, people need to remember that the hood renovation was completed in what, ninety-nine?
That's correct.
That's the final, that was the year it opened, right? So, you know, it doesn't seem like it was that long ago, but it was.
It was, correct. These are the highlights of the facility, you plan, future requests on the horizon over the next three years. I told you I was gonna come back to this, this three-year capital summary chart, and as I, this is the chart I showed you at the beginning of the presentation, where I said we're making an effort to kind of balance out the requests over the next three years, not to have any huge, large ticket item in any given one year for the CIPC to have, have a hard time to, to address. Obviously, in year three, if that's the hood school boilers, which is causing that to be a little bit of an outlier there, again, could the MSBA and school projects reduce that potentially? If you look at, the chart below then compares the prior three years and what actually was appropriated and approved. So, we are making an attempt to, to move things forward. We definitely have large capital needs on the facility side, mainly at the little and hood schools, some of the older elementary schools, to continue to move things forward. But we're also, we're trying to be as mindful as we can of what is realistic in terms of what the CIPC and the town can fund under the capital process, and, you know, we've, we're in that a hundred and forty-five, hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollar range of what's been able to be appropriated for the school projects over the last three years under the CIPC process, so we're trying to be mindful of that and stay as, as close to we can within that range, and I think we're, we're pretty close to achieving that with this plan.
Did you know it was requested in sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, what our requests were?
I do, yeah, so if you actually look what, what the items were.
No, no, the, like, the total, like, in eighteen, if a hundred and ninety-two thousand was approved, what was the request?
Oh, okay.
You know?
There was a little bit more in each year, I can tell you that, just kind of anecdotally, I know that we haven't, we never received a full approval of all of our requests, there was always maybe fifty to sixty thousand that was not, not supported, there was always like one request.
Last year, I think it was just the tool cat that was.
It was just the tool cat of, of seventy thousand that wasn't supported here. I think there was some vehicles that maybe weren't supported here, or maybe the tool cat again, actually, and I think there might have been a fifty thousand dollar.
Was two years.
Request here not supported, yeah.
So, Michael, the, the one thing that's interesting about the, the hood boilers is, and I think you might have touched on this, if, if we get involved with the MSBA, it's gonna cost more than three hundred thousand dollars.
I would be willing to bet.
So, how, how do you make a, can you make a determination ahead of time?
Yeah, I mean, something to con, consider. I mean, we might, we might actually get back to this number for the town.
Exactly.
After the reimbursement.
Right, that's exactly what I'm getting at, so.
I mean, I think the, the question is, do you, you know, would you get a, a higher, you know, efficiency, better, you know, boiler by working through them? I know that's something, you know, we'd have to, to research and kind of vet when we come to that, that process.
The other thing I wanted to ask was, and, and I think we do a really good job of this, we pretty much spend every cent we get for capital improvements on the, and we do it pretty quickly, correct?
Yeah, we always time, yeah.
We don't have any projects outstanding right now where we've had money.
No.
That's excellent.
Right. So, moving on to, so these are, again, we'll be asking you to take an official appropriation of the FY nineteen and adoption of this plan at September twenty-fifth, but with an eye on the focus of fiscal nineteen, the administration sort of looked at its priorities, keeping in mind what's gonna have the greatest impact on the, the classroom, and again, in keeping in mind that, that, you know, safety to students, staff, and public in the community, et cetera. We landed at putting these five capital requests for fiscal nineteen in this priority order. Certainly, the computer devices, moving forward with that one-to-one initiative, certainly is, is key. We feel beginning to replace that technology, instructional equipment, smart boards, MIMI boards, projectors is key not to impact the classroom. And then eye for safety, certainly the little school gym floor and the paving project is key, and then obviously that multifunction, just because of that payback period is so small, really, all five of these are really, we feel are, it was hard to put these in, in an order and label one more important than the other, but.
I guess the only, the only change I would make is I would, I would probably swap two and three, I just, that little, that little school gym floor has been something I've wanted to replace for like ten years, but I think that, I think I could, I could live with this. I know we're not voting on it tonight, but.
If we get any resistance, just tell them we're gonna put in a statement of interest for a new little school.
I'm sure that.
They know you want one.
Right, exactly.
Well, I, I would, I would say I disagree with the priority order. I mean, I just think the replacement technology in particular, it doesn't seem like we even know exactly what that is yet, it's not identified. I think, I think safety concerns, I mean, the computer devices, I agree with number one, but I mean, I think safety concerns, I think the paving project actually is, I think it's a danger over there right now, and I actually think that needs to be prioritized higher and potentially the gym floor as well.
Okay. All right, no, that.
I'm just one person, but I mean, I think.
That's a good point on the paving over there, and with that new, new area where it's just basically gravel.
Well, and, and what, what people do, you, you saw when the building project was going on here, what people were doing to find parking spots over here.
Right.
You know, when people start parking where they're not supposed to be parking, and, I mean, to me, it's, safety has to be the number one concern, and I think the paving project of, is the most dangerous of the, of the conditions, so I would put that as, as number two, personally.
Okay.
I think they're all, I, I think they're all highly viable items to be considered by the CIPC. Nothing outrageous up there, you know, the multifunction activity bus, I've gone back and forth on, but, you know, one, it's gonna be a fifty thousand dollar bus that we're asking thirty-five thousand dollars for, and we'll basically pay for it in two years.
Correct.
With savings. Well.
Three to four year payback.
But with the thirty-five thousand, saying we'll pay in two additional years, we'll pay that back.
Julie?
Yeah.
Back the fork.
We try.
So, just a reminder, this is the timeline, so the CIPC is now requesting their request sheets, a little bit later than in the past, in the past, it was September thirtieth, now it's October thirteenth. We're asking the school committee to take an official vote to adopt the plan on September twenty-fifth. CIPC typically then reviews the requests, makes field trips if necessary to gather all relevant information, November, December timeframe. We then are ranking that request, the CIPC members, January and February, that sometimes goes into March a little bit. We try to review and come to a consensus of the ranking order in the March, beginning of April timeframe, and then typically the CIPC presents to the Board of Selectmen the board of selectmen their recommendation in the, in April and then submits the final plan for including at town meeting again in that April, beginning of May timeframe. Okay?
So Michael, there, there is one thing mentioned today at finance planning team, and I know we're not going to get a number tonight, but there was discussion about what we discussed earlier about the parking lot. And if we can't get some sort of agreement or whatever with Gilbane or whoever, that we may have to put some sort of project in at some point for the parking lot. So I just want to make sure that that, I'm not looking for a proposal now, but that's at least in the thought process that maybe in two years we have to do something there. I, I, I don't know. Looking at it now, I, I just don't know.
Would that go through the school committee or would it go through the SSBC?
If, it would go through the school committee if, I mean, it depends. It depends on one, how much money are we going to have left after the whole deal is done, right? And two, if we can, i- if there's an issue with, um, workmanship or, or whatever, perhaps we have something that can get paid for through one of the contractors. I, I just, I just, I don't know. I just, I just want it to be in their, in the thought process that we may have to consider that. I'm hopefully, hopefully it won't come out of our budget, but just want to think about it.
Chris did raise it to spawn about dealing with it. I think John has a short-term plan for dealing with it. It's supposed to be long-term, Mel would have to just monitor and see what happens.
Right, right.
If it became something that got ahead of us or was too big for us to go out of our own budget, we might have to consider putting on a list.
I mean, I think the short-term plan is a good one to prevent any further damage over the winter.
I think it is. I think, and I think it'll be interesting to see what does that get us?
Exactly, that's it, right.
After a winter, you know, and how, is that a manageable approach?
Right.
It might be. It may not be though. Your point is well taken. It could be-
Cause what, once the winter's over, we'll look next spring and fall, summer and see what, what develops there.
Right.
Um, but again, you know, we were told it's, it's, the warranty's up, a one-year warranty.
Correct.
So. Any other questions or comments for Mike?
Great.
Great job, Michael.
Are you, are you clear on what, for the 25th?
Yeah.
On what we'll be looking for? Okay.
Yep. I, I do, I do, I ju- I just want to say, I think I do agree with Scott on that, um, paving, that that maybe should be moved up on the, on the priority list also.
I knew we'd find agreement eventually, Mel.
Took a long time.
Only taken eight meetings.
Thanks, Michael. Excellent, excellent preparation as usual.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, next we have, are we two minutes already?
Yes.
We are on minutes. You are on minutes.
We just have one set of minutes, correct?
All for the August 20th.
Oh, they're all on one thing.
Yes.
We have the regular, uh, open session goals workshop from August 28th, 2017. Can I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the open session goals workshop for August 27th, or sorry, 28th, 2017. Second.
Any discussion? Alls in favor? Aye, opposed, unanimous? Then we have the executive session on August 28th, 2017.
Make a motion to accept the executive session minutes of August 28th, 2017. Second.
Discussion? Alls in favor? Aye, unanimous?
I did.
And then we have the open session minutes from August 28th, 2017.
Make a motion to accept the open session minutes of August 28th, 2017.
Second by Julie?
Thank you.
Silent second by Julie.
I said it.
Very quiet. Any further discussion on the minutes? Alls in favor? Aye, opposed, none, unanimous. Okay, next, no budget update, Mike?
No, we'll have our first next meeting.
Okay. Staffing, nothing, John, right?
Correct.
Bids and donations, we have nothing tonight?
That too is correct.
Which I think is the fir-, this is the first meeting, I think, in a long time.
You know what? We got one today.
Oh, we did?
Got one today and I was going to try to sneak it in, but I said, Al.
There was one on Thursday.
So that, we do, we do have, uh-
Very long time since we haven't had any.
Very long time. Um, next we have subcommittee updates. Before we get to the finance planning team, which was this morning, I did just want to provide a brief update on the, um, athletic facilities committee. Uh, tomorrow we are having our second, not the athletic facilities committee, but we're having our second job meeting with, uh, the contractor.
Yep.
And, um, everything seems to be moving along there. They hope to get started next week. Um, we're going to have a lot more details tomorrow. We've spent a lot of time at our first meeting discussing safety and around the area. They're going to put a six-foot chain link fence up and, um, we did discuss today, and I think John said, or Michael Gobert said that we should at least notify the police and fire department that that, well, okay, so that's been done, that the project will be starting.
Also notified, notified Mary Preney for the senior housing.
Okay, oh, right, right there. Yeah.
And they were trying to make provisions for concessions during-
Exactly. There was a meeting today, right?
There was a meeting today. There was a meeting today on that.
Okay.
The high school principal, athletic director, boosters, so.
Cause it's the, the music boosters are the primary, there's youth football probably and the music boosters.
Yeah, our, Marty Titherton is working with youth football, but our, our primary concern was with the music boosters. And so that's what that meeting was about today. I mean, it's going to be challenging, but we're, you know, doing our best to try to accommodate them.
For a shot period.
Right, it's, it's, exactly.
The other thing is, um, I was talking to, uh, track coach, Pinzopolis, and he's very excited because, um, he says this will give us a really good opportunity to host, um, the relay, uh, state relays again.
Really?
Although we're, we're being moved up a division in, uh, track.
Oh, that division, uh-
Division two.
Two or three?
No, three, division three in track. We're being moved up a division. And, but he's, he was excited about having that new facility because in the past, we've always had an issue where we've almost lost the meat because we didn't have, uh, restrooms. So that'll be good. So finance planning team, um, oh, Jerry, you want to take that?
Um, pretty much the primary, uh, thing that we did today was to go through the October town meeting warrant, uh, from articles one to 19, and I'm not going to bore you with that. Um, Mel actually did, uh, give them a briefing on the, on the bathrooms and is probably going to do a very brief report-
Yes.
-as part of article one, which is actually an act on reports of town offices and committees. Um, you know, there's some monies in there that's going to be moved around and transferred into stabilization, uh, the, the capital improvement stabilization fund. Um, I think there's some prior, uh, years bills to be paid.
Very, yeah, a couple, very, very small number.
There's a couple of bills to be paid. Nothing, nothing really significant. I think, um, there is an article on there, article 17, requesting an additional 150,000 dollars for legal fees relating to the school project. Um, and, uh-
I think they said that 150 wasn't final. They expected that's what the number would be, but-
Yeah, they expected that was the number.
Right.
And there was a great deal of the warrant, if you take it when it comes out, articles 10 through 14 are dealing with the water situation, the MWRA. So there's already been a lot done. In order to change, um, the, the plan from the MWRA to the Yandova water supply, we have to go back to town meeting to do that because that was all voted by town meeting. And there's a lot of work yet being done by the board of selectmen and the town administrator trying to negotiate and ironing out the details of any type of a water agreement. So spent a lot of time doing that. Um, I don't know Mel, if there was anything else to rectify.
Almost about it.
We did talk about, um, at the end.
Oh, budget? We talked about budget schedules?
Budget schedules, yeah. Yeah.
But that was-
We gave them out, but Mike had the budget schedule with him and, uh, he gave them ours, which I think we've already received. And so I think our, our schedule is consistent with what their schedule is too. There was a mention by, uh, Mike Prisco, the chairman of board of selectmen, that they were going to take maybe a little bit of a different approach to their budget building this year, uh, including maybe looking at in addition to a, what they would normally call a, uh, level services budget to a, an initiative budget that may have some initiatives above and beyond the level of services. So, you know, we'll deal with all that when the time comes.
John, anything else? I think that pretty much covers it.
Is there anything else?
No, I think, um, there was a bit of a talk about the building project.
Oh, right.
This building project and where things were at. And we gave them a summary, much like I gave tonight.
Right.
Um, but I think those were the four or five major items.
I'd say between the water issue, uh, um, and the Berry property issue, you know, the selectmen are very busy right now, trying to get those things wrapped up. And they're still working very hard on getting the Berry, uh, project signed, sealed and delivered, I think by December 1st, so that they can maximize the, the amount of money that we're going to collect in.
Yep. Okay. Great. For, um, the subcommittee schedule, athletic subcommittee is meeting tomorrow at 12:30. I already mentioned, this isn't a subcommittee meeting of ours, but I mentioned that the work, uh, work meeting will take place tomorrow for the bathroom and concessions facility at the turf field. The policy subcommittee is meeting on September 14th at 7:00 AM and the superintendent's conference room. That would be the worst committee to be on.
I'm surprised every time you read that.
I mean, I'm getting to, I'm going to sleep around 5:30 and I can't imagine having to get up.
You're looking at policy.
Getting, getting up in an hour to look at policy.
We're very excited about it.
Excellent. SS-
What better way to start a Thursday?
Yeah.
Mr. Bernard offered to meet when he comes in at 5:45.
SSBC is September 19th at 5:30 and there'll be a pre-meeting before that, probably at four o'clock to discuss the punch list with the principals. NORCAM meeting, September 28th. And the next finance planning team, I don't, you have that written down? I-
Yeah, we had that as the, uh, was it the 27th?
Final, was it the 27th?
Yeah, the 9:28.
I can tell you right now.
Was it 27?
No, we wanted to meet one more time before, uh-
Before town meeting.
Right?
All right. So I have it as-
Some reason I wrote down 9:28.
I think it's next year.
I actually don't have it.
It is nine, 9:28 at, at 8:00 AM.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
9:28, eight.
No, it's eight.
Can you make 8:00 AM?
Because I have a 9:30.
It's hard. I told John, I told Johnny to have to give me a wake-up call.
Yeah, you did say a wake-up call. Robo-call.
Even at the meetings at 8:15, he sleeps until like 9:15. Then he wakes up and he jumps up.
Oh, gosh. All right. So, um, that's it for upcoming meetings. Administrative report, Mr. Bernard?
Yes, so just not, not, not a lot to report to you tonight beyond, um, I think I've re- floated these dates by all of you previously, but I did want to call this to your attention that, um, once again, that on, and Maureen, thank you very much for promoting the Ellen Adele plaque dedication ceremony to take place on September 21st at 4:00 PM on Main Street here at the middle high school. Maureen, if you'd be so kind as to start to work on the Dr. Trottin, uh, same, similar ceremony on October 17th at Tuesday, um, on, at 4:00 right outside as we, um, dedicate the, um, this, this space, the distance learning lab in honor of Dr. Trottin's service as the superintendent of schools. And on, uh, September 23rd, a Saturday from 9:30 to 11:00 AM, um, I believe Mr. Colleen may have been in touch